Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Webster Central School District Board of Education Meeting Business Meeting and Budget Workshop. Would everyone please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And now, please, before we go further, can we have a motion to move out of executive session? I see Suf and Sue all in favor. Thank you. Okay. Welcome to the March 4th meeting. We typically do not have visitor speaking time at budget workshops, but we recognize that there are members of the community wishing to address the board. The Board of Education conducts the business of the district, and while meetings are held in public, they are not public meetings and are governed by rules. Boards use public comment period as an opportunity to listen to concerns, but not to debate or enter into a debate. We do, however, welcome hearing from community members who would like to address the board, and we appreciate their participation. We are also available by phone or email to engage in conversation offline. Visitor speaking time is three minutes long, and community members wishing to speak can request time from board clerk Cindy Cushman, and they will receive a Zoom link. Cindy Cushman will also introduce this evening's speakers in a moment. We would like to reiterate the district's position on reopening schools. As your Board of Education, it is important that we continue to stress that we support a full return to school when it is deemed safe by the governmental agencies whose guidelines we must adhere to, specifically the New York State Department of Health. The criteria and agencies that are responsible for issuing guidance have not changed, and we still need to abide by six-foot social distancing, wearing masks, ensuring staff has access to any federally approved vaccine. Some districts have the ability to work around these guidelines, but because of the size of our district, we do not. Classroom space and transportation guidelines are significant barriers. Recent media attention claims schools are open, but it is only within these guidelines. There are no exceptions to the governor's executive orders. The reason schools are safe is because we've reinforced these guidelines. We join our colleagues across the county in advocating for a safe reopening of our schools. In order to do so, many districts are requesting that criteria be developed that is equitable and based on the safety of students and staff. Until the governor, the SED, the CDC, New York State Department of Health, and Monroe County Department of Health change or revise current metrics, we will continue instruction as is. These are the same entities who recommended the closure of schools and who are responsible for issuing guidance, with the New York State Department of Health having the ultimate authority. We continue to advocate for this guidance. We are almost a year into this pandemic, and if for no other reason, our school communities need to see that there is a light at the end of this tunnel. We are asking that medical professionals assign values to the above metrics that can serve as that light. Once we know what factors need to exist in order to have the option to bring more students back to school, we can then set community goals and create local plans. Development of these metrics provide an opportunity to promote clarity after contending with almost a year of uncertainty and confusion. Surveys will be sent to parents, teachers, and staff to ascertain their perspective on reopening so that a plan is developed that represents what our community would like to see. And with that, we would like to move on and welcome and introduce our speakers, and I invite Cindy Cushman to do that, please.
Okay, first, we have Marissa Antonaro. Marissa, you're on mute.
Hi, everyone. Excellent, so I just start talking? Okay, perfect. So I have come here before you this evening to address the concerns of not only myself and my child, but also what I have come together as the vast majority of the Webster School District. As we have passed this one-year anniversary this week, one of the most devastating tragedies, here and now is a time that both the community and the BOE stop hindering our children educationally, emotionally, and socially. Okay. So let me start with the facts. As according to the CDC, the virus itself enters the body via the cells receptors, ACE2 receptors in the body. There are fewer found in children as are adults, less in elementary students as middle schoolers, and so on. Now, keeping that in mind, the World Health Organization so far has suggested that children under the age of 18 years old represent only about 8.5% of the reports of the cases, and only 0.02% of that is mortality rate. And also, according to Noemi Burdock, Associate Professor of Pediatric and Policies, who also joined the Office of Governor Gavin Newsom as the lead for the California Safe Schools for All team, she states that the issue of kids bringing the virus back to the family members does not seem to happen. It's not impossible, but based on several scientific studies, they have learned that most of the time, even when schools are open, the kids are actually getting infections from the adults within the household rather than the kids bringing it from school. But now, let's switch over to the social and mental aspect. Since school started six months ago, the allotted educational time has decreased 80% elementary students in school learning and 60% middle school students. Thus meaning that 60 to 80% is not only the learning, but the social interaction. This coupled with the immense virtual classes, homework, and heavens forbid your child has AP classes, the struggle for these children to basically teach themselves from a video they've watched is ludicrous. But what about the other end of the spectrum? What about the children who have learning disabilities, mental and/or physical disabilities, that already found the task of schooling difficult? What happens to their educational learning curves? They can't get tutors because of COVID. They can't have the one-on-one needs or the IEPs managed because of the schools barely active now. I mean, honestly. And by the time elementary students get off the bus, my elementary student gets off the bus, goes to school, and gets on, it's about 90 minutes later. At what time do you think a teacher would have the ability to take the extra steps that are necessary for some of those children that are desperately needed? I guess overall, I asked why the Webster Board of Education is not taking initiative like the Greece Superintendent with questioning the guidelines put in place? Why do you only have 20 to 40% learning in Webster School District, but yet we still pay 100% of the school taxes? This was rumored to believe that part of the issue was the transportation, and so why not allocate money in other places than, say, I don't know, a brand-new wing for Stry with kids that barely go to school or brand-new beautiful offices for you guys? And then turn around and tell the district that we can't have afford bus drivers? I guess maybe what it all comes down to is instead of using the Board of Education as a popularity contest or a political forum, start taking the children's needs into consideration. Dr. Robert Redfield, Director of the CDC, stated himself that there is an extensive data that has been gathered over the last two to three months to confirm that K through 12 schools can operate with face-to-face learning, and they can do it safely and do it responsibly. So basically, as I wrap up, the only last step is to follow what the people are asking and have asked for, and is for you to take back your responsibility to be the vessel to help provide our children with a bright and soundful education, much like Rochester City School is doing and much like Wayne School has continued to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate hearing from you. We do. Cindy?
Next, we have Frank Ciardi.
Good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me? Hello? Can you hear me, guys? Good afternoon. I thank the school board for its well-crafted letter to the participants of today's meeting. It was very well thought of. It set forth, I guess, your position, and I appreciate it. However, I very much am opposed to it. My name is Frank Ciardi. I have three elementary school children. All three go to Whit Road. My oldest goes to Mercy. My wife, in the beginning of school year, told me, maybe we should have our children go to private education. I said, I trust the Webster School District. I think they're going to make a plan that's going to make for better education for my three children. Was I wrong? My Mercy student is thriving. My three children are suffering. I have the pleasure of having my nephew, who goes to Webster Elementary School out of Buffalo, I'm sorry, West Seneca Elementary School out of Buffalo, who's living with us. He has full-time education. He's on the Zoom Skype meetings, three and a half hours in the morning and two hours in the afternoon. He's looking at packets. He's reading with his other children. He's spending five hours a day, every day, studying. My other three children spend two hours, and that includes the time they're on the bus. I resorted to having my first grader take the packets from West Seneca Elementary School in Buffalo and do that work. Quite frankly, to this board, West Seneca Elementary School in Buffalo is doing a better job of educating my first grader than you are. I wrote to Mr. Gaminah. I spoke to Mr. Shipto, my children's principal. I've asked them, what is your plan? Everything comes back to six foot, six foot this, six foot that. I have a child at Mercy. I witnessed firsthand every day how many kids are in her classroom. Fifteen, the 20 children. Does the six-foot rule apply only at Webster? I spoke to parents who are raving about their children's education in Pittsburgh, Westeran McCoy, Honey Island Falls, raving how their school districts have been fully open, how there's 16 to 18 kids in the classroom. I see pictures online of my children together with other students in their classroom. They're not six feet apart. You're using this as an excuse to not be fully open. It needs to stop. Why should I be allowed to have less of an education than the children that have, than the parents that have children in Pittsburgh, Westeran McCoy, Honey Island Falls, even right here at St. Rita's? There are 18 to 20 kids in each classroom at St. Rita's. You can't tell me that their rules are different than Webster. Does education matter more there? Do the supposed New York State Department of Health rules not apply to St. Rita's? Does it not apply to Mercy? Does it not apply to Pittsburgh? Does it not apply to Westeran McCoy? Does it not apply to Honey Island Falls? They've made a choice to educate their children to the highest level. You have not done the same. You have made a choice to have your elementary students spend less than two hours a day studying. By the way, sometimes that includes gym and library. I have put my son on the bus for two hours to go to gym and library.
Fifteen seconds left, Frank.
I have witnessed firsthand how my daughter is not behind at Mercy. She's thriving. Their students are praising their staff. Pittsburgh, Westeran McCoy, how praising their districts. Why are you so reluctant? I read Mr. Gaminah's emails. He doesn't want to change. Things are changing in this community. Courts are open. I was at court today. Classrooms are open in other parts of the districts. People are changing, but you are stuck on a six-foot rule that is made up to make it so that you can't have school open. I'm asking this board, have you gone to the other districts? Have you gone to Westeran McCoy? Have you gone to Honey Island Falls? Have you gone right here in St. Rita's? Have you observed those districts? Mr. Gaminah, have you gone to those classrooms at St. Rita's and observed whether or not they are six foot apart? Go, do it. Figure out, I'm not done. Figure out how to make this district have the same education that those other districts have, have the same education that those elementary schools are having. I'm confident that if you put your mind to it.
Mr. Ciardi, your time is up. Thank you. We're going to move on to the next speaker. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have April Schwendt Bennett.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to discuss our kids getting in school all day, every day. Our kids are suffering and suffering badly. They have been getting literally a half an education this year. My middle schooler goes to school on Mondays and Thursdays. The other kids that go on Tuesdays and Fridays have to learn what my child just learned the day before so that everyone will be on the same page by the end of the week. My son is getting two days a week in class, and sometimes he's taught new things on Wednesday. My elementary school is in two and a half, my elementary child is in two and a half hours a day. What can be learned in two and a half hours? Not much. Again, she goes in the morning, so the kids in the afternoon session have to catch up on what she was just taught a few hours earlier. I have listened to each and every Wednesday remote class from my son's school. Almost every week, at least one or more of his teachers have gotten on the Google Meet, taken attendance, and said, go work on your homework, and I'll see you in the next in-person class. I have also heard, I don't have anything new for this week or other reasons why they could not teach for a whopping 25 minutes. My child has been on some meets for as little as three minutes. That's disgusting. Every parochial school that I know of in the area is open fully. So maybe this illness doesn't affect Catholics. Good news for me, we're Catholic. So why if a charter or parochial or alternate education school cannot be open fully, why can't we? Karen called me over break after I emailed all of you and the principals of my kid's school. The main reason he gave for no full education is the vaccine. My thoughts on that is teachers are essential, period, vaccine or not. Did cops, nurses, doctors, delivery people, people working in grocery stores, Lowe's, or anywhere else that stayed open, did they stop because they didn't have a shot? No, they did their job because it needed to be done. Teachers need to do their job fully. No more messing around. I've seen teachers in stores, the bank, in restaurants, eating, and among other places. If they can do that, they can be in classroom with the children. New York State requires six feet or a mask, not both. There is no reason we cannot get all the kids that want to be in class together in school. If you need to buy barriers to make people feel better, let's reallocate some of the budget that was voted from previous years towards that. We don't need a new scoreboard or field upgrades, or every building does not need a new vestibule or really anything at this point. And there is quite a lot of hypocrisy over the kids being six feet apart regarding the superintendent. On February 27th, Karen put a Twitter post about the Thomas basketball team and how proud he was of them. Don't get me wrong, I am proud of every student in this district also. However, all of them were standing for the picture with arms around each other, faces inches apart. Another Twitter example is on January 22nd, Karen himself was standing with his arm around a student who was in the Thomas play. Just to take two examples from Twitter. If sports or plays can get kids with their faces inches apart while wearing masks, why can't my child or any other child in the district get closer in the classroom? Entire counties, and not just the rural ones in the state, such as Suffolk, Nassau, and Albany, which is in Cuomo's backyard, along with almost 250 schools in New York City, are fully open right now or will be within the next few weeks. This needs to be fixed now. If it does not, I fear for our children's mental health. Some studies have shown that suicide rate is up 330% from last year among children. Some children are home all day physically with a physically, mentally, or sexually abusive parent, older sibling, or another adult. Kids are also being online all day, and this can lead to the possibility of being coerced or groomed by pedophiles. I know you don't want large, I know you don't want large groups of kids killing themselves or being abused or even possibly abducted and trafficked. Las Vegas School District had to open because of the spike in suicides. I don't want to see that for our district. That would be on your heads, not on the parents who are fighting for our children. This has to change now, period. Our children need to be in school fully. Thank you.
Thanks, April. Thank you for speaking. Do appreciate hearing from you.
And next, we have Kim and Amy.
Good evening. I'm here to ask you to, I'm Kim Colley, and I'm here to ask you to consider the option of allowing the high schools, specifically the seniors, to remain hybrid for the remainder of the year. Some of you already recognize me from previous board meetings where I sat in the back watching my daughter, Amy Colley, fulfill her role as the Webster Thomas Student Liaison to the board over the past couple of years. I'm motivated to speak tonight from a couple of different perspectives. First off, you all know Amy from Thomas. What you might not know is that Amy went to private elementary school at a Christian school in our community. Many of her elementary friends continued on in private school, and we have stayed close with those families. There is one private school in particular that continued with five-day-a-week instruction through the pandemic. Because of the way private school is structured, their COVID infection rates did not make the evening news. We know families where students missed weeks of instruction because the families got COVID over and over again within their family, and it kept stretching out. As a result, parents missed work due to infection. As a respiratory therapist myself, I know firsthand the gravity of the critical care concerns related to this virus. I know this isn't a popular opinion, but we need to be certain we are protecting our teachers, staff, students, and at-risk families from this virus. Right now, that protection comes in the form of a vaccine that is not readily available to every member of our community. All of that being said, I completely recognize the stress remote instruction brings to so many students and families. I would suggest that the educational needs of certain groups of students be evaluated, and the start of full-time in-person instruction be started back in stages, starting with the youngest students first, as they seem to have the greatest needs. Those kids are still learning to learn in that environment. Amy will speak to how she has been scheduling her time to maximize productivity in her hybrid schedule. But I will say this. I know many students are not as driven as she is, but I believe the hybrid schedule has mimicked a college schedule, and has forced our daughter to become even better at managing her time. In closing, I ask that you consider allowing high school students, and specifically the senior class, the option of staying hybrid for the remaining 14 weeks of school this year. This schedule has provided small class sizes, time for intentional focus on work to be done, and most importantly, safety for staff and students. Thank you very much for your time.
Hello, I'm speaking as well because I am the daughter, and I just wanted to briefly share my experience within the hybrid program. And I just wanted to say that I recognize that everyone's experience with COVID and this situation is different, but here are some of the things that I've been able to do because of the hybrid model. I've been able to create my own schedule. On the asynchronous days, I'm able to wake up around 8:30 in the morning, do yoga, eat breakfast, and then start on my assignments. I found that I'm able to work at my own pace, finish my work in the morning, and get started on other things that I'm passionate about. I'm a writer for a national magazine, so the schedule has allowed me more time to write. And in the last few weeks, I've been able to interview people like a New York Congresswoman on one of my asynchronous days. It's allowed me to create a business to help pay for college, and I've also had the time to apply for over 40 scholarships. I've had time to dedicate to my mental health through yoga, meditation, and working out, and it has decreased my anxiety levels. I'm a nationally-ranked clay target shooter, and this model of learning has given me the opportunity to train more. I've also been able to start an internship with a social media management company and pursue real-world experience. My biggest stressor for so long was that I didn't have enough time to do everything that I wanted to. And this hybrid model has been able to solve that for me. I'm able to do the things that I'm passionate about and thrive. My grades also should be noted that they have been the best out of my entire educational career with two APs. I've found that the smaller class sizes allows us to focus more and fosters more individual conversations. I hope that if the decision is made to resume five days a week, there is still the option for students to stay in this model for the remaining weeks left in this school year. I'm not implying that we do one or the other, but I think there should be at least options. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim. Thanks, Amy.
Okay, we do appreciate hearing from members of the community, and thank you for taking time out of your day to share your thoughts with us. We take everything that we hear into consideration, and we do want to reiterate that this will rest with the New York State Department of Health, and we will continue to advocate on behalf of all of the safety of students and staff. Moving on now, please, to the regular business of the meeting, the second reading of Policy 3010. And Sue, if you'd like to speak to that.
Can you hear me now? Yes, okay. Sorry about that. So we had our first reading last week, and there wasn't any questions, so I would just call for a vote at this point. All those in favor for approving the second reading of Administration, Organization, and Operation? Say aye.
Aye.
Any nays there? Okay, sorry, Tammy, I kind of took over for you there. Just moved things along for you.
Okay, yes, that's perfectly fine, pretty straight.
Okay, so motion carries, is everyone here? I don't see everyone's face.
Well, when we're screen sharing, no, it's difficult to see everybody, so, but we are all here.
Okay, so I didn't hear any nays, so motion carries, 7-0. Thank you.
Thanks, Sue. And now, moving on to the Budget Workshop portion of the evening, Brian Freeman. Take it away. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We'll have remarks from Vice President Lynda Diaguardi first. I apologize, Lynda, please go ahead.
No worries. Thank you. Welcome to our first Budget Workshop of the 2021-22 school year. As the Webster Board of Education, one of our primary roles is to develop and adopt the annual operating budget. The budget represents a financial articulation of what we value, and that is to provide an excellent educational environment where all our students and staff are compassionately connected, joyfully engaged, and always learning. We want our students to wonder, create, and apply knowledge, to explore their passions, engage in authentic learning experiences, and grow as well-adjusted, confident, and compassionate individuals. Our broader aim is to promote a lifelong love of learning and enduring connections between school, community, and the local environment. Our budget converts our values into investments, our goals into plans, and is committed to being fiscally responsible and to making wise investments in our future. Our guiding principles in developing the budget is to prudently invest and align resources to positively impact the students' experiences. We will reflect the labor materials and resources required to fulfill the goals and objectives of our school district. Our budget will also meet all of our state mandates and contractual obligations and be one that will be supported by the majority of the community. Tonight, we will hear updates on the tax cap and the state aid. We will also look at the expenditure areas of central service, debt service, buildings and grounds, transportation, and benefits. Brian Freeman, the Assistant Superintendent of Business, will facilitate us through this workshop, and questions can be asked by the Board of Education.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lynda. All right, let me share my screen. All right, how's that? Can everybody see that thumbs up?
Yep.
Good font size, everything? All right, perfect. So tonight's agenda that we're going to run through is we have an update to our tax cap, take you through some changes there. A little state aid update, we've gotten some background information, been able to tease out some information. Don't know where the numbers are going to finally shake out because it's going to be, you know, buckle up for a very interesting march in Albany. I think everybody can say it's been a very interesting start to the month with Albany politics and all of that going on while we have the state budget. So it's going to be interesting to see over the next 25 days how things shake out for schools and education in general. And then really, we'll do the expenditure areas, the five really operational aspects. We'll talk a little bit about our debt service projected out, buildings and grounds budget, kind of the central services, the backbone operations is HR and business, the transportation budget, and then get into the overall benefits budget. So first of all, I just want to walk you through an update to the tax levy limit and what's kind of changed from the initial draft. So first of all, I just want to walk you through an update to the tax levy limit and what's kind of changed from the initial draft last month when we did this early on in February. So our tax cap formula highlight a couple changes. Really, this highlighted number is what's changed, the capital exclusions. It is down about eight hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. The difference being what we're projecting for building aid compared to at the start of February. When we did the projection start of February, we had just received the governor's number for what building aid would be. And to, just to refresh everybody's memory, this was the number we were looking at, seven-point-eight million dollars. This is what we shared in the beginning of February. Now, where we're going to be at, it's about eight-point-seven. We were able to dig in over the last month to see what got missed on the governor's projection, what's really going to happen. Remember, our capital projects life cycle, especially with the Spry construction, the Thomas construction from the 2016 project. Lot of moving parts, when is the paperwork getting in, when's it getting done, what's the governor have on his backup? So I think in the past month, we realized he had left off on his projections what really was going to happen with our capital projects. So we are right here updating the difference between the two months, this one number moving from the seven, seven-point-eight million to the eight-point-seven number. So what does that do? Nothing else has changed in our tax cap formula, still the same growth percentages, still the same CPI. No movement on the pilots, no movement on the pension contributions, that's all stayed the same. So the one difference is the increase in building aid. So as the building aid goes up, the proposed tax levy limit has gone down. So the last number we were at was three-point-nine percent. So right now where we're sitting is at a three-point-one-eight, the extra aid drops the tax levy limit down. Like I said, everything else stays the same. This, overall, the tax cap does not have to be finalized until the Board of Education approves the budget. Kind of go hand in hand. So it is a work in progress. So, you know, if the Board of Education decides, yep, this is here, we want to break the cap, not saying that you will, there's time to do that. Or if we wanted to do three percent, we could do that. This isn't set in stone. The March first deadline is just the first report to the comptroller. So this is what got submitted on behalf of the district to the comptroller to meet the March first deadline. But changes are, can maintain for the next six weeks, and that's my point. It's going to get reported from the comptroller because all the information's in there, he'll release it. Every school district's cap will go out. But there are possibility for changes after the fact because Board of Education still has the ability to make decisions after effect. But this is what you will see come out from the comptroller's office when it probably gets released. You know, it was due on Monday, probably within the next week, you'll see that, you know, through all the different media outlets that the tax cap numbers have been released from districts across the state. Update there, any questions on the cap changes? How the building aid process shook out? As you can see, it's also right in line with the what last year's increase was. And that's, you know, what we tried to do with the debt service, try to maintain it to be consistent. So year over year, there isn't too much fluctuation. All right, I'll keep going with some state aid updates. Don't have actual dollar numbers, but started to break down the numbers behind the numbers and to give you a perspective on where the district's headed with all the different formulas that we're looking at in Albany. So this data that drives all of our state aid formulas is just about a three-year lag. So as we're projecting out to twenty-one, twenty-two, you think what was going on financially, economically across the state three years ago? And then I have a side-by-side comparing last year where we were to this year. So the first number I'm showing you is the combined wealth ratio, and that really is the benchmark across the state to determine if you are wealthy or you are not in New York State. One is the state average, and it's really a measure of income and property wealth against the state average. So last year we're a point-eight-five, this year we're a point-eight-six-two. We've been as high in the last five years as point-nine-zero and as low as, you know, point-eight-four. So every year there is some variation because it all fluctuates on the state. And when we talk about fluctuating on the state, the huge benchmark is obviously New York City and Long Island. And as you can see, these numbers at the top, this is property wealth and income wealth. So in essence, the state takes our total property values, divides it by how many kids we have, comes up with a number. They do the same thing statewide, statewide total assessed values of all properties divided by how many students. There's your average, that's where you get one from. So state property is seven-hundred-and-twelve, we're at six-oh-three. So we are below average when it comes to property wealth. State income average is two-thirty, two-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand-eight-hundred, we're at two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-four-seventeen. Below the state average, but not nearly as wide as the property value. So those are the two numbers when benchmark gives us this point-eight-six-two. It's important because it goes into every single formula that's run. So between last year and this year, small tick-up, which means in all of our formulas, the amount of aid we're going to get will come down just because of that. So like public access cost aid ratio went from a point-five-six-seven, point-five-six-one. The threshold went from a lower forty-one thousand, it went up to forty-two thousand, so about a thousand. So these are small numbers, but they build up after a while when you calculate into the formula. Private access costs, and remember, this is students with disabilities, extra aid we get from the state from a point-eight-seven-three down to a point-eight-seven-one. So you can see the impact, BOSI's aid ratio from a point-six-seven-two down to a point-six-six-six. Same thing, transportation. And then the three-year free and reduced, you know, seems counterintuitive, right? Because it's like, oh, we went up in, you know, wealth factors in comparison between the two years. But we see almost, you know, a four percent jump in the three-year free and reduced. And I think what you're seeing there is really technology catching up to the paperwork process. So students, over the last five years, we've seen this grow since I've started in the district. We're at eleven percent and every year we've gone up. Majority of this capture, this increase, it has to do with the direct certification of students with disabilities. So if you're qualifying at the state level with something, most notably Medicaid, that student automatically qualifies for free and reduced. It shows up here regardless if they accept free and reduced meals or not. So if one kid in a household gets it, then all the siblings get it. So you have all those siblings that qualify it for as well. So you've seen this uptick in free and reduced, which means you would think, okay, free and reduced going up, our economics should be going down, but really it doesn't have that one-to-one because of this direct certification program the state has been doing. Questions on those state aid updates? And hopefully the next, you know, four weeks, we'll see some numbers with, from the state so we can, you know, get pointed in a direction on state aid and what that's going to be for our budget. But so this is some of the background that's going into what Albany is working on right now. Any questions? Good. All right, sorry, I can't see everybody's faces in the box at once, so just shout out if something pops up. All right, let's, so let's break down our budget areas and get into where we're looking for some of these areas. So first off, we're going to start with buildings and grounds. And really, so buildings and grounds, you know, we're one-point-five million square feet of buildings with about a hundred and thirty-five employees, up to two-hundred-and-sixty acres of land now officially with taking on Basket Road. Some air differences I want to highlight for you. Normally, the budget process is buildings and departments get to submit requests for Mr. Cunningham and the Facilities Department to work on special projects for the next year that they're looking for their building. Perhaps it's some new cabinetry, perhaps it's a sink replacement, perhaps it's a new wall popping up, perhaps it's changing out water fountain for the bottom fillers, all sorts of requests. We did things a little different this year. We didn't take any requests because we had no idea what was going to happen. So given the unknowns, we didn't know about state aid when we started the budget process. And really, we wanted to focus on maintaining and focus the essential operations in cleaning. We think that is going to bypass any other things that we could do as a facilities department and get us into next fiscal year with just running essential operations and cleaning. Things that break, focus on that, focus on our preventative maintenance, focus on all of our repair contracts, focus on maintaining clean and healthy environments. So all of the dollars that we currently have set aside going to all that. So unfortunately, another year of no special projects, no improvement, but I think we'll be all right moving forward. And just as an aside, you know, for this current budget year, we've, we're up to almost a half a million dollars in COVID-specific supplies alone with cleaning supplies and extra materials and different things that we've been doing. So that's pivoting from what we normally do. And, you know, not buying or purchasing or working on the normal things around health and safety, especially programming curriculum, a lot of those upgrades that get requested, stopping those, taking the dollars that were allocated and pushing it into these COVID-related expenses. So we're planning next year for possibly the same thing. That's why we took no, really no BNG request this year. So some changes though that did still have to happen, so you think about it, the Spry project and the Thomas project was approved. You know, we're now looking almost, you know, over four and a half years ago when we got voter approval for the Spry Cafeteria. So well before any of us even knew what COVID or coronavirus was, we were hopeful to get that auditorium up and running. So we moved DAO and the Professional Development Center back to Spry, moved technology and BNG back to their new location on Sanford Street with storage, which is really coming quite handy for storing extra desks and things that have been removed from classrooms for ease of mobility. And then really spent a lot of time preparing the district for safe reopening with a lot of cross-training of our staff and the new cleaning equipments, disinfection processes, and filter inspection. And really, the staff has done an entire, an amazing job above and beyond to maintain health and safety standards during this pandemic. And a big heartfelt thank you to the level of professionalism and the quality that the buildings and ground staff and custodial staff has done in the past year. Looking ahead, just for next year is every year we do a hundred thousand capital outlay project. Our construction team looks at these, these are fun little projects that New York State has a threshold on, you could do up to a hundred thousand dollars. All it needs is budget approval and you get, for us, it's seventy-seven percent of the aid back the following year. These are projects that normally we'd be doing in-house with our own people or outsourcing as part of the facilities budget. So all we've done for the past, now this will be the seventh year doing this. We've reallocated funds from the Buildings and Grounds budget to this transfer to capital to increase our state aid. Next year on the docket, we're looking at Clem North Elementary to replace the roof gutter and drainage system around the outside. They've, that is beyond its useful life, so that's where we are going to invest our hundred thousand dollars next year. You will see the transfer for the hundred thousand dollars listed under the debt service. It's part of that portion of the budget, but it's also a facilities item. We always like to call attention to it. Going back and working on Clem North next year. Any questions on that? All right. So next up is the proposed BNG numbers for twenty-one, twenty-two. You could see the year-over-year change is one-point-five-nine percent increase budget-to-budget from twenty-twenty to twenty-one. You know, you see on the two line items that have gone up, one is salaries, one is BOSI services. Everything else has stayed flat and some of the reasons why. So when we look at cost drivers for BNG, what's substitute summer help continue to increase because of minimum wage? So we do rely on a significant number of sub cleaners to come in and with a custodial staff, cleaning staff of about a hundred, people will call in sick and it happens every year, people go out. So we do have a, not as large a stable as teacher subs due to, but we do have about fifteen or twenty subs that we keep on and work through. Their salaries are, that substitute salary is tied often to minimum wage, so you'll see that increase in the salaries. We don't know what minimum wage will be next, next year. It was actually around this time when they started the minimum wage escalation that there was going to be a commission to look at, is it going to stay at twelve-fifty? Is it going to keep going up by the seventy cents every year or is it going to shoot right to fifteen? And then there was some regionality to it, New York City would kind of be carved out, something separate. So I think Albany has kind of lost sight of that. So in our planning is works, something's going to change next January. I don't imagine it's going to stay at twelve-fifty, I imagine something will change, but we probably won't get to it till next November. So we just kind of have to be mindful of that and budget forward accordingly. I'm predicting it's going to probably go up by another seventy cents like it has been. So probably somewhere in that thirteen-ten, thirteen-twenty range from the twelve-fifty it is right now. Also, we're expecting to hire a little bit more this summer as we return to some normal operations. So last year, we did not bring in the high school and college kids and the numbers that we normally do. This year, we're expecting to uptick there a little bit more, have those students return, those part-time workers to help out and assist with some things this summer, so expect a little bit more normal there. BOSI's operation software going up, that's where you'd see the extra percent increase there. Our operation software that comes from our work management and our Raptorware, some of those software costs went up more than, more than trend. And then just, we're just trying to maintain all other line items, nothing new. And then where are we saving, why are we able to keep some, some things down? Salaries, even though, you know, you're thinking six, seven percent on the minimum wage, we've had some turnover and retirements, so we have some salary breakage there. The, but with no budget process for special requests, I mean, Mr. Cunningham, myself and Mr. Flood, when we looked at the facility side with no new requests, we didn't have to move the needle on anything. Nothing, no really cost increases for anything because we're just holding stight. And then on the energy side, pretty neutral with usage and the new boiler and lighting systems that we've installed. You know, as a reference alone, the new LED lights at the Aquatic Center, what it costs to run, turn the lights on the Aquatic Center with the new lights, we can run them for three weeks to get to what one day used to cost. Really, the savings has been quite significant on the electric side with the Aquatic Center with a hundred percent conversion to LED. So we're seeing that, we're doing LEDs anywhere where we touch a ceiling. You see a lot of those popping up around the district, so our energy costs have been neutral because of some of those changes we've seen.
Brian, are we on a contract price, excuse me, with natural gas?
We do a cooperative bid with the other county, with Monroe County Schools. That is run actually through Monroe Two and through Grease. Both have a hand in either, one's the natural gas, one's the electric. And so we cooperatives buy it and it's on every six-month rate change. So.
So you don't see that as a risk with energy going up and the economy starting to heat up?
Not with the, what we're seeing on the savings on efficiency is mitigating any risk I see moving forward.
Okay, great. Okay, great.
Any other questions on the the facility side? Alrighty, head right into transportation. So another very large thank you uh for our drivers and staff keeping us open this year. Uh, as part of this budget process, I don't think uh could express that gratitude enough. And you know, we have seen throughout the fall that many times if a district has had to go to remote is because they've had a tremendous amount of uh bus drivers um get quarantined or uh in fact uh did uh contract COVID and uh just didn't have enough drivers. Uh, our drivers did a tremendous job keeping us safe, keeping us open this year. Um, and also, I think uh goes without saying, adjusted to the new schedules. Uh, if anybody can remember uh the half-day kindergarten, the way that was in, um, the doing this uh added uh and an extra hour to every driver's schedule for the most part uh and then coming in and coming out. And so uh just adjusting to that new schedule, taking it and running with it was, they've been great. Um, so a big thank you to and shout out to them. They met the challenge. Um, and changed quite often on the fly or within the day with uh new things coming in and out. So just wanted to start the transportation budget off with that. Uh, you'll see right off that, we've uh used to outsource um for some special education placements uh to uh contractual uh bus service. Uh, we no longer need to do that. So we'll see, uh you'll see a savings off the top right there. Salaries, uh you'll see an increase, bus monitors and extra hours for um the office staff for planning. Um, they're, you know, the past year and we're not expecting it to stop. Um, just running so many different scenarios, working some overtime uh for garage and office staff. So a reason why salaries are also increasing on because of that planning side. Uh, another thing that we're also doing is doing paid training for prospective drivers. This is something that we dipped our toes into last year to see how it go and now we're jumping in with both feet. Uh, following a couple other districts lead, uh namely, uh you know, hate to view them as competitors, but as one district is gonna offer pay training, the marketplace is scarce for drivers, uh we, we jumped at that too to see how it would and look. Um, so those are some cost increasers you'll see. Now, when looking at the numbers, uh overall, less than two percent. Uh, so you see the salaries going up three point two five, uh monitors are at minimum wage. So we're projecting that to be above what our normal contractual rate increases would be when you talk transportation contract. Uh, like I said, with the paid training, you see the twenty thousand dollar reduction on the contractual side. That is the specific contract uh that we no longer need, uh, because we could do that all in-house uh or through BOSI's, which we've have a previous contract with. So no need for the additional. And um, you know, all other line items able to hold our insurance costs flat. We get, we're getting a uh credit from our insurance company on that to be able to stay flat because of not as much bus usage. We're not traveling as much for uh sporting events. We're not traveling as much as field trips. Our insurance company has realized that um and much to their credit have been proactive and said, we were gonna charge you X. We know it was based on this type of projection. You're not doing the miles that we would normally have to cover. So we receive a credit, credit back. So that's helpful that our insurance has been able to stay relatively flat in this area with uh bus usage. Cause our insurance, we have our general liability and then we have the automobile. So two separate items there. Any questions on transportation before jump into just a reminder on the bus proposition?
Sorry, Brian, I got a question. Well, let Sue go.
I was just gonna say, I can't see the percentage increase where, oh, I see.
Right here in the lower right-hand corner, the one point nine five percent.
Well, Mike Alt and uh Mike Saffaletto are, are in the way. What is it?
One point nine five percent. Let me see if I can make that a little bigger. Does that help?
No, now Dave Swenson and Mike Saffaletto are in the way.
Just change.
One point nine percent.
One point nine five percent, yep.
One point nine five, one point nine five percent. Thank you. Now, it's just the way my screen is set up. That's all.
Just change the speaker view.
Yes, I need to do that. I need to do that, Mike. Show, let's see.
So, Brian, the fuel number for twenty one twenty two is the same as twenty twenty one. Yet, we're gonna have schools reopen, we're gonna have sports. Presumably, we're gonna have a lot more busing activity. Fuel prices are going up. So was twenty twenty one much below seven fifty and that's why you're thinking?
Yeah, so the seven fifty number is set at you know, uh, it's a conservative budget number for that could take wide swings in the, in the price of fuel. Um, it has, it was about, it's actually, I think it's seventeen eighteen or eighteen nineteen, we did go down about fifty thousand dollars. Cause when doing, you know, the zero-based and looking at what we would be and where the pricing is, um, you felt confident enough that we could get a savings there without the long-term risk of what if diesel goes to three fifty or four dollars or five twenty nine, you know, something like that. Uh, they're confident with the consistency in this number that it could meet the highs. And then if it does come in lower, then we have uh some additional, you know, fund balance at the end of the year to be able to uh sprinkle elsewhere.
I guess from my standpoint, it would probably be helpful if you had a column that showed twenty 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 one actual versus the budget. Right? Because I'm guessing you're much more of the seven fifty thousand for this school year and that's why you can project the same number budget to budget.
Right, I mean, we're, yeah, we don't have the actual number. We'd have a year-to-date.
Or a year-to-date even. You could extrapolate. Okay.
In, in essence, that's what I'm, I do behind the scenes. You know, based on how many miles we're going right now. Um, you know, September of this year doesn't look like September of the year before. And actually, right now with sports being a little out of whack. Um, you know, this March doesn't look like a normal March either. Um, so, you know, that's why I actually like to go back three years on a three-year pattern to look at stuff like that, three years of actuals, three years of budget. Um, because of those anomalies like this year would be.
Okay, I'm set. Thank you.
And then as a refresher, bus proposition uh that will be on the ballot. Uh, we're once again returning to the international and bluebird models, uh ten conventional buses. Every year, we do ten in, ten out for the most part. Uh, then we're doing four of the micro bird. Uh, mini buses, total cost is about a hundred thousand dollars less. Um, the first payment is actually not until the, even though it's the bus proposition for twenty one twenty two. We will not see the first payment on this till twenty two twenty three. Uh, so you'll see the reduction uh take a hold that year when we go over debt service. Um, this year, um, you'll see on the bus debt service will be the uh slight increase because we bought um, we bought the wheelchair buses. So those are hitting the books for um for this upcoming year. And without further ado, we'll get right into the debt service portion and just give you some borrowing updates. So this uh summer, end of June, begin in July, we're going to issue a ban, which is a bond anticipation note for the sixty nine point five twenty eighteen project. What is a a bond anticipation note? That's just a short-term borrowing uh to help with cash flow uh for this project before we had to permanent financing, which is what we will be able to do for the forty-three and a half uh million dollar twenty sixteen project. That project is done and so we are going to do the permanent financing. Uh, we're gonna strike while it's hot and um get the probably some great rates is what we're predicting. Uh, the twenty fourteen project, if you remember, we're in year five of fifteen on paying that. That is the roof project that we did. We did roofs on almost every single building um in back in twenty fourteen. So we're in year five, fifteen, ten more years to pay that off. That was a twelve point nine million dollar project. Where we use three point two million of a capital reserve to offset um borrowing there. And then you'll start to see debt from the early two thousands will start to fall off soon. We'll have one point five million come off by twenty twenty three, twenty four, then an additional three point five million in the twenty four, twenty five. And that's why we did the sixty nine and a half million dollar capital project, because the permanent financing for that will hit right at the time those are falling off. So you'll see that consistency. Uh, like I said, slight increase in the borrowing amount because of the delay. Uh, no changes in transfers to the federal fund. Normally, we support summer federal programs. Uh, we pay twenty percent, it's picked up by eighty percent. Uh, no changes. We're expecting to transfer the same amount, two hundred and forty thousand dollars. And then you'll see the hundred thousand dollars transferred for the capital project. Um, for the one hundred thousand dollar project at Clem North. So overall, our total construction debt, I could highlight that right here, is up four hundred and twenty seven thousand. Really, that increase is because we are doing a ban on the sixty nine and a half million dollar. Um, as you note, as you could tell, principles going down, interest is going up. The short-term borrowings, uh you have a higher interest rate than the long-term. So less principal, more interest for the short-term borrowing. Uh, bus, you see the increase in principal there by fifty six thousand. Point that out right here. That is the increase because on a delay, the wheelchair buses we bought um now hitting the books for next year. And then, so total debt service is really just up that amount of the ban that we're going to be doing for the sixty nine and a half. The hundred thousand, that's the transfer of capital, then the transfer of the federal is two hundred and forty. No changes there on uh those two. You know, transfers and debt go hand in hand. Questions on that? Alright, jump into the next areas, our central services. Uh, what is the central services? That is Board of Education, District Clerk, Superintendent's Office, Financial Operations, Personnel Administration, our insurance costs. Um, any refunds, judgments against the district, we pay out of here. And the largest part of this budget is our BOSI's administrative budget. That is the um basis for us being members of Monroe one. We pick up the largest share of the administrative budget. Their rental and their capital budget are all put in through this part of our budget. It's a pretty small part of our budget. Uh, overall, it's four point nine million dollars projected for twenty one twenty two. Uh, one point one seven percent um increase over last year. Couple changes, I'll just uh point out to you, here is the BOSI services being one point uh almost two million dollars of the four point nine of this budget. Uh, like I said, the admin costs, also the financial package we utilize uh for the business operations and the H R uh frontline package that we utilize for H R operations. Those are huge um software costs that are part of that BOSI's package. So slight increase there. Uh, our insurance company, slight projection, three percent increase, year-to-year change there. Uh, and then some movement on the instructional and non-instructional salaries. Uh, a member of the H R staff is now certified, so their salaries had to switch positions. They are now have to be categorized on the instructional salaries. So that looks like it's out of sorts. Uh, but if you notice right below, you see a decrease on the non-instructional side. Um, that's where that salary was before, but because it's a certified person, we have to report in an entirely different area. Um, so you see that um that changed there into the instructional side. Okay. Moving along, last part of this, of the back office kind of operational things uh before next uh workshop, we get into benefit, uh get into the instructional side a little bit more in-depth is we'll take a look at our benefits. Um, and where are we benefit-wise updates? Pension system, T R S had a small increase uh from nine point five three percent to nine point eight. So you'll see that play out in the numbers. I'll give you a little bit more historical background on that. E R S uh from fourteen point six to sixteen point two. That one was, I was not expecting. I don't think a lot of people were uh very surprised. That comes out in September. So that uh projection was released by the comptroller in September of twenty twenty. And I wonder if maybe they waited a couple more months if they would have changed their projections at all. Uh, because you know, T R S didn't jump like that and they're both benchmarked to the uh stock market. So it's uh kind of surprised uh that E R S did take a jump like that. It's the smaller of our two pension systems, so it's not a huge dollar amount increase, but still was quite surprised to see that happen. Uh, FICA, Social Security and Medicare grows as salary grows. Um, so you'll see that just increase as we go along. Then healthcare, big, big chunk. What the RASH one rates were about a nine percent increase. That's our pre fifty-five retirement plans. Uh, RASH two rates were at a five percent increase. Um, in comparison, that's for active employees. Um, and for um retirees that are maintain those plans going forward. Our Medicare plans were, were flat. So when we projected out and saw our sixty-five and older population, our retirees, uh, their plans had remained relatively flat. Um, as we look ahead. And then some transition, more and more people are picking up the deductible plan. So that's helped dampen the increase year-over-year to um, when we look at costs, where we build from the ground up. First, let's dive into the pensions. Here's just a kind of visuals where the pensions have been since two thousand, two thousand and one. Uh, don't pick, I, I picked that for a particular reason, because you see how that's one of the lowest spots the pension systems have ever been. Um, and just to kind of see where that, that goes. Could see somewhat, they follow the same kind of roller coaster ride from real low to up and down and uh tick back up again. So that's just a visual to give you um what those pension rides have looked like since two thousand, two thousand and one. Then historically, if you look across the board, teachers with twenty-five-year average rate was seven point six. Twenty is nine point three, ten is eleven point nine, and the five-year is nine point seven two. So this year for the teacher's retirement, we're at nine point eight, which kind of is in align with what the five-year average is. Uh, not too wild. Um, but if you look at the dollar value from two thousand three to twenty twenty-two, uh, the bill was one point three, now it's up to seven point uh three five. So did the same exercise with the employee's retirement system. So you could see the employee's retirement system has always trended above T R S. Even on the twenty-five years, almost eleven, twenty was thirteen point two, ten is sixteen point eight. And the five years, fifteen point one two. Um, so this year at sixteen point two, it actually falls uh in between the five and ten-year rate of uh where it's been on average. And then you see in two thousand and three, our E R S bill was a hundred and fifty. Projected for next year, it's going to be about two point nine million dollars. So just some historical context, where the rates have been and uh kind of always this put this into the budget process, because we always use this to try to project out uh what we're going to do, what we see and what we do is on the horizon. So. I think I heard one.
I, I said, great data. Did, so do you know why E R S has a four percent bias over the T R S and aren't they managed similarly?
They are supposedly managed similarly, but they actually have two different structures. Uh, the employee's retirement system is run by one person, one person alone. It's the comptroller. Uh, T, teacher's retirement system has a board that oversees it. Uh, so it has multiple people helping to make decisions. So the comptroller has the ability to unilaterally make decisions. And the comptroller, historically, no matter who it is, is much more conservative on their um actuarially tables. Um, especially with, in recent years, making changes to the, they were used to both be benchmarked on an eight percent rate of return. Um, the comptroller has been very aggressive in dropping that rate of return. Um, I believe now he's at six point five. So that plays into a rate increase from year to year and also you know, the, the makeup of the two different employees that are in each system is different too. And length of work um and uh time in the system and them paying into it. Alright, good question. Alright, next up is workers' comp. So we've seen some increases there. Um, this is um, I think Sue, to get to one of your points of unfunded mandates. Um, between two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, you see our workers' comp bill was six hundred and fifty-four thousand uh, four hundred and fifty-five dollars. All the way up to now projected for next year to be one point two nine seven million dollars. This is all a hundred percent state-driven and the benefits given out. And the requirements around workers' compensation. Uh, we are part of a consortium with fifteen other districts in the county. We pool our resources. Um, we take shared claims. But there is very uh, little that I've seen across the state from consortiums. In the way of being able to do anything to offset the state mandates and requirements. If, there's been nothing but up, 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 upticks in the week, in the weekly benefits from year to year. Uh, that workers' comp gives out. And it's all state-driven. So here is a perfect example of an unfunded state mandate. That we have, you know, we bear the burden locally. Um, cause we have to offer workers' compensation and insurance in, in New York State. We're self-funded um, with the consortium, ourselves were self-funded. Um, and so, you know, it's, it's just one of those, it, it, you know. It's, it's an extra six hundred thousand dollars over the last decade or so of where did that come from? And why is it being driven up? Sure, some of it is claims data, a few more slips and falls. But this is all top-down Albany rules and requirements um, and what we have to do in the workers' compensation world.
So the other day, uh, one of our representatives asked if we, you know, could pick the top three. And um, I mean, there's just so many. How do you pick the top three? But if we could pick one, would this be one of them? As far as the most costly to school districts.
Well, that's a tough one right now.
I know. Well, the thing is, there's so many and.
Yeah.
You know.
This one's an easy one, because if there's easy legitimate numbers, you could tie to it. But then you could always get somebody to come back and say, well, your claims data is high. You've had more accidents. You're not doing enough to do injury prevention, or maybe you should salt the sidewalk some more. And they'll, they'll have a way to explain away, oh, no, it's not because we changed the weekly benefit from six hundred and forty bucks to eight hundred and fifty. You know, you know, though, there's always a way to kinda look at it from the other side. Uh, this would be up there. Um, but I.
It's just so frustrating. I mean, talk about it every year, and there's just so many. That you can't pinpoint anything, and then people just give up and, 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 and don't address it, you know? You know, we have all these papers and all these, you know, you know, um. Talking points, but specifically speaking, that's not something that. Our representatives are gonna address that way. You know, you need to have specific numbers. They need to, you know, what can we go after and what can we get you quickly?
Right. Yeah.
Anyway. It's always on my mind. I appreciate it. Thank you.
No problem. Any other workers' comp questions? Alrighty, so then break it down, healthcare a little bit, just to kinda show you where we've been since two thousand two oh three. What our healthcare budget has done, going from about four point five million to twenty-six point five. Those are huge numbers over the past twenty years. Um, and I guess the one question we always ask is, is why is this happening? And this is not unique to us. That I, I share this kind of uh, historical healthcare to stimulate some thought. This replaced Webster's presentation with Fairports or replace it with anybody else's. Um, even in the private sector, you could look at, at this and, you know, maybe it flattens out a little bit. But you know, in the last twenty, twenty-five years, you know, back in two thousand and two, two thousand and three. Um, you know, surgeries that were not as routine are now routine now. Um, think of knee replacements and how much those cost. That wasn't something that was even that, um, that common back then. But now it, it seems like everybody gets a knee replacement or a hip replacement. Just had a family friend, you know, that uh, you know, got a hip replacement uh, six months ago, and he's already ice skating and back on the ice. Um, at the age of sixty-two, um, and doing things like that. Uh, twenty-five years ago, you just didn't see the mass volume of these expensive surgeries. I think there's a lot of context here. Why does healthcare cost more? It's because healthcare has improved so much. And the research and development behind it, um, those costs need to be recuperated. And you see that bear out in our historical healthcare trends when actual costs of plants go, so. Um, and then of course, soon the New York State mandates don't help for that. What is required to be covered? Uh, under New York State healthcare plans, we are part of a consortium for healthcare. How there's mandates from the New York State Division of Financial Services of what we can and can't do. There, they actually set targets for what our plans have to be at, what they have. Uh, what we have in reserves, how much cash we have to have on hand. So a lot of, you know, a lot of regulation around healthcare as well, uh, going forward. Is one of the reasons.
One quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
We know preventative care helps. We know telemedicine helps uh, drive down costs. Does the consortium share recommendations? Or do they just manage? All the district's plans? Because any, is there anything they do or try to do that's helpful?
Uh, yeah, they do a lot of instructional, a lot of learnings, a lot of things like that. I, I know, actually on our um, intranet website, we have all the telemedicine, how to use it, how to sign up for it. It'll be interesting to see, uh, cause I know that did catch on last spring when doctors' offices were closed. Um, we'll see if that continues. Um, if, if there's an increase in, in the use of telemedicine to. Uh, you know, use technology to limit overhead costs. Um, we'll see if that trend continues. Uh, but from consortium-wise, we all, you know. Well, look at, you know, what do we have to keep uh, as, as a group to pay claims from year to year? How much is the Department of Financial Services in New York State who oversees the healthcare consortiums? Uh, in their financial operations, how much do we have to keep in cash? How much do we have to keep in reserve? Um, how much do we have to keep for emergency reserves? There's all different levels. Um, but we're always looking at educational opportunities. What can we do uh, to have all the members across the county that are involved? Um, you know, hey, maybe if you look at this or look at healthcare in a different way. Um, you know, it's the one area that. You know, we still haven't become a hundred percent consumers on. I mean, we have changed as, as a society into the Amazon. Uh, where's the cheapest price? What's the most convenient? I mean, we've seen retail not catch up to that because of Amazon. Um, but healthcare is the one thing that I, I think people haven't flipped a corner on. Um, to become consumers and like, alright, here's an app. Where can I go get the best prescription price? We, we always default to the easiest one. Oh, I'm going to Wegman shop and I'll go get fill my prescription at Wegmans versus, well, you know what? If I go through the drive-through at Rite Aid, it could have been cheaper. Um, I don't, we're not, I don't think we're there yet to think in terms of healthcare as a consumer. Um, of retail and kind of shop it around. Um, so. When that happens, then maybe we'll see uh, a break on some of the stuff, um, the overall cost of the, of it, so. Just my opinion in two cents.
Brian, to, to, to discuss it even further. You know, it, it's one thing to get the price of a prescription at one store versus another. But if you have to have an elective surgery, you know, whatever it is. You can't go and say, how much is this gonna cost me? You didn't, you don't even know who the providers are gonna be. You may know the surgeon. But then, and you may know the hospital, but you don't know the anesthesiologist, you don't know, you know, the medicine, you, you just can't even get that information.
I need a rotator cuff surgery. Do, what's the price at Rochester Regional versus the U of R versus?
Right.
X, Y, Z versus uh, A, B, C over here, right? It's, you know, and, and that's why we're, we're just, it's just not there yet. The system isn't in place for people to make a lot of those decisions, so.
Right.
So Sue, you asked the question earlier, right? Where do we need help? I mean, I just don't see this trend at seven percent a year. Sustainable.
Right, it's not. You're right.
Right, and the only way private companies have managed this is they've gone to high deductible, and many of them have cut the benefits for retirees. None of which are popular in school districts.
No.
Uh, uh, none of which is popular in any municipal environment. Um, you know, any kind of government entity. Um, you know, we're, these, you could take these charts and just replace them with a different school district. Um, and you'll get the same result. Um, I'm just using Webster's numbers. It's, that's, you know, that's the main theme here with this. Um, this benefits chart could be any other district of, they're gonna be about fifty-five percent health. But you know, workers' comp will be, you know, maybe a little different, but FICA, TRS, ERS will all be right around the same percentages. Um, we are relative, we're no different than any other Monroe County District. Um, when it comes to these same types of trends and, and breakdowns.
But, but Brian, it's grown to fifty-five percent. I'm sure back in two thousand and three, it wasn't fifty-five percent of the total pie, right?
Um, I used to have, I'd have to dig it out, but I do have uh, the total pie actually from like ninety-one, ninety-two. And it's, it's still relatively the same. I have to go find it. Um, it's, it's in a binder someplace. Um, but yeah, the, the pie pieces. You know, I think workers' comp has gone from like zero point nine to, you know, the two point seven. Um, percent, you see that eat away at some things. Um, so when TRS goes down, that could be eleven percent. So the pie stays relatively. Um, the same level of slices, just health gets the biggest piece. So when we look at the numbers now of our, gave you some kind of visuals to look at. So when we look at our budget overall, we're just below a four percent increase. You see the ERS, um, when we run those numbers, two point nine million and seventy-five thousand dollar increase. The TRS, because it's larger, uh, just about a one percent year-over-year difference, seventy-six thousand. FICA is a three percent increase. Uh, when we look at overall salaries, that's where we think that'll go, trend up. The workers' comp, the year-over-year, that's just less than a six percent hit for us. Uh, life insurance, unemployment, stay in the same, health, about five point one seven percent. Um, you know, right at the, at the trend, um, actually not. Based on what the retiree, um, RASH one plans at nine percent. Uh, having it be at five percent is, um, is actually pretty good. And a lot of that has to do with uh, more and more people picking up the deductible plan. Dental stayed flat the last three years. We haven't seen cost increases there. Um, some more increases on the buyout side. We've seen a small change there. Um, the HRA plans, the service fees for that, I see a increase there, so that's where. Um, and that's per uh, HRA plan, so about a three point five percent increase there. Flexible spending, uh, no increase there. So overall, uh, forty-eight point four million on the benefit side. Three point eight four percent overall increase. Last year benefits was a five percent increase overall, so we're percent lower this year. Um, that's in spite of having a TRS and ERS increase. Um, so we're at five percent. Uh, the year before was actually a pretty much flat increase year-over-year. Um, between eighteen, nineteen and nineteen twenty, that's cause we almost saved almost a million dollars. Um, on the TRS line, so that wiped out all the other benefit increases. And then the year before that, we're at three point seven eight percent um, year-over-year. So about the three point eight fours right generally, um, for the last five years where we've been. Somewhere between uh, that four, five percent overall benefit increase. So when you add up all the five parts of the budget we did tonight, it's uh, eighty-six million eight hundred twenty-seven thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Um, presented this evening. Uh, so we're done with the kind of operational side. And next workshop will facilitate through, um, you know, look at any. Um, revenue updates, changes, look at, you know, if the pilots have changed their sales tax projections, any other miscellaneous revenues. Uh, bring in some community ad, uh, do that part of the budget. And then on the instructional areas, we'll go over special education, library, technology, curriculum, the buildings. And athletics is on tap for next time. And with that.
Brian, I have a question.
Go ahead, Mike.
Um, you showed us a snapshot of Webster's budget. And uh, what I would like to know is, in all the areas we talked about, you know, the debt service, transportation, uh, benefits, the central service, et cetera. Um, where does Webster rate in relationship to other districts and what they spend on, on, on those areas? Do you have that information?
I could, I could pull that information together for you, Mike, and have that for the next workshop. Um, I have to dig a little deeper this year for it, um, cause actually one of the um, budget cuts. That we did internally was to get rid of the software that did that for us. So I, I gotta phone a friend. And I won't ask for a username or password, but I'll ask them to be able to run that for me.
I would just be interested in how we rate in all the areas.
Yeah, uh, and I could take a look. I'll go back and redo these. Um, you know. I, you know, debt service will be the hardest one, because you know, for example, I know Rush Henrietta, they don't issue debt. Um, for uh, their capital projects. They store away cash and then do it that way. Uh, Brighton also is, has done that as well, um, historically. So you know, when you compare debt from districts to districts, it's not always apples to apples. There's some oranges thrown in there. But yeah, I could take a look at that, get it for you.
What, what we're spending though, you know?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Here's kind of an unrelated question. Um, are there more podcasts for people to look forward to, or how are you, how are you planning that part?
Yeah, we just finished one the other day. Um, as Paul was working on. Um, maybe drowning out some uh, background noise, I think we got in the room. Uh, so uh, from one of the microphones was very sensitive and was picking up some, I think, hammering from, from outside. Um, so I think we have another one, should be ready to go probably in the next week or so. And then we'll be taping another one, I think in two weeks. And we'll keep them going as we, as we go through, straight through till the budget vote.
I think they're terrific. I hope they're helpful and I hope uh, community has taken advantage of watching and um, yeah, look forward to episode three.
Well, yeah, it's fun to do. It's, it's reinvigorated my, you know. For love of the budgeting process. Much like Sue and policy, my, my love for the budgeting process.
Well, lucky us, right? We get to benefit. Okay, any other questions from anyone? Anything you'd like to add? We appreciate all the work that goes into this very much, Brian, and thank you to transportation and buildings and grounds and, and our behalf as well for all the efforts that. Everyone has expended in this completely unusual and unprecedented year. Very grateful.
I would agree. Yep, they've done a fantastic job.
Um, okay, if there's nothing further, this was. For information only, and um, I believe we can conclude for this evening. Thank you. Is it okay with everyone? Alright. And thank you, Paul, as well, and, and Cindy, and thank you, everyone, for being here. We appreciate it. Take care.
Thank you.
Hey Paul, can you stop the recording?